Welcome to the Executive Committee of City Council. Today is November 1st, 2021. We're going to start with city updates. Ms. Solano.
Good evening, Chairman ALOF City Council, Mayor Gradisar. I have two or three brief updates from the city this evening, and the first is a COVID update, and we'll invite Randy Evans, the Health Director for the city, to the televised evenings. But in the non-televized night, I have the cumulative numbers as of this afternoon. The past week number count is up to 567. It is up from 553 just last Friday. And the one-week positivity rate is up to 9.2, and it was 9% last Friday as well. Our website is showing eight days of stabilized hospitalizations, or at least not increasing, that are due to COVID patients. But tonight, I do not have any numbers of COVID patients in either Parkview or St. Mary's Quayle Hospital. I have a second update on the Pueblo Cooperative Care Center mobile shower unit. They did actually shelter the winter, the mobile unit for the winter months, and with those planned, rescheduled opening of the end of February or the 1st of March in 2022. Corey Higby at the Cooperative Care Center, however, was successful in making arrangements with the showers at the First United Methodist Church in downtown on Main Street and Dent, I believe. They're going to open up the church showers for the community that had been using the mobile showers. More information on accessing it will be coming out from Cooperative Care soon. Corey also added that since the onset of COVID, there have been nearly 2,000 showers out of the mobile shower unit, and so felt like it was really serving the community that it was intended to serve. And then lastly is a congratulations to both the Southern Colorado Economic Development District and the City of Pueblo, who partnered on an application for a $1 million Small Business Administration Navigator Grant. We were successful in being awarded that grant. We were selected out of more than 700 applications across the United States, and they awarded 51 awardees, which is very cool. This will help the 13 counties in the southern southeast region. It will provide technical assistance services such as accounting, bookkeeping, legal, marketing to small businesses in the region that can help them recover from COVID. SCED will be the fiscal agent and administer the program. The services from Pueblo will be offered through partnership with Digital Heart Media, the Latino Chamber of Commerce, Naderbrook, Southern Colorado, the Pueblo Arts Alliance, and Pueblo Community College for Training and then Boyd's Bookkeeping and Administrative Services. So congratulations and kudos on receiving that grant. The next ARCA recommended projects for funding to be presented to City Council. If things go well with scheduling, will be next Monday during the televised work session from those of projects that would be recommended to City Council to fund. And that does conclude the updates from the city today. Any questions or any directions or requests for a following update?
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Counselor Schilling?
Seems like a real wasting asset to put that van out of commission during the winter, when somewhere we must have, someone must have a building. That's all they need. It's self-contained, where they continue to use it, just a thought. But to put it away seems like a wasting asset, and that makes no sense to me.
Excuse me. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Solano. Sir Tensio?
Is it going to be put on next week? Do we get to see them before next week? Do you have them now?
We do not have them now. The mayor meets with the Internal Task Force on Wednesday for his recommendation and decision on what he will bring forward to City Council.
Okay. We'll get them Wednesday?
Yes, the mayor will give us direction on Wednesday after the 10 o'clock in the morning meeting, and will forward the ARCA requests for funding at that time.
Yeah, they have not made recommendations to me yet, so I don't have anything that I can review and come back at. So we hope we'll try to get into you as quickly as possible, and then try to have them present for the work session on Wednesday, so you can ask questions of the people who are recommending be funded. So, yeah. They will. They will at the work session.
Yeah, the following, the following, the following process had been a work session, and then with your direction, it would follow up with an ordinance or a resolution in the following formal meeting.
Yeah, I think what we're asking for is to have the information before the work session, so we can look at it.
As soon as the mayor then decides on the recommendations on Wednesday, then I'll send an email with those attachments.
On what day will that? I'm messing with you. That's good. We'll go on to number two on the agenda, which is the Pueblo Housing Assessment and Strategy. Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Ratchford, Mr. Grun, and Ms. Jeans.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council, Mayor Gradisar. With me tonight are members of Grun and Grun Associates, who participated in the strategic housing assessment, a collaboration between Pueblo County, Pueblo West, and the City of Pueblo. And I would just like to state that the analysts came to the city with a can-do, bend-over-backwards attitude, and they were a pleasure to work with, and they developed quite a comprehensive study, which we'll just barely be able to scratch at tonight. But we'd like to leave a lot of room for questions for you. And as we had introductions, on the internet is Deborah Jeans and Aaron Grun, and with me tonight is Andrew Ratchford. And I will let Andrew start off with the presentation.
We've got a 15-minute summary of the findings and recommendations I'm going to run through, and then will all be available afterwards to take any questions you have. So the purpose of the study was to evaluate the housing market, to quantify housing needs, to understand the factors contributing to those needs, and then to recommend a strategic approach to addressing needs in the future. Two key elements of a housing assessment order: one, make a forecast or prediction of future housing need to accommodate growth; and two, to evaluate the economics of producing the needed housing in Pueblo. The latter is important because it helps to pinpoint housing needs the private market can and can't address on their own. A lot of the research went into the assessment, including touring the community, seeing the neighborhoods, and doing some of the research the old-fashioned way, by talking to knowledgeable people in Pueblo. We interviewed one-on-one about 20 professionals locally, from local home builders to nonprofit housing organizations, residential real estate brokers, bankers, and downtown developers, as well as representatives of the Housing Authority. With the help of Brian and the steering committee, we also designed and administered an electronic housing survey that garnered close to 500 responses from city and county residents. The relationship between housing and economic development in Pueblo was a major underpinning of the study. So Pueblo is immune from the reality that inadequate or unaffordable housing supply can become a major constraint to economic development. Attracting or retaining an adequately sized labor force requires a diverse and competitively priced housing stock. Insufficient workforce housing also has quality-of-life implications, such as related to commute times or overcrowding, which ultimately can become constraints to economic development as well. If workers are forced to spend more of their income on housing, they're spending less on other goods and services in the local economy. That reduction in demand over time means fewer amenities, such as restaurants and so forth, will be supportable in the community. So the bottom line is this: improved economic development in Pueblo will require facilitating more residential development than has occurred over the past 10 years or so. A few of the highlights, if you will, of the current situation include residential construction levels that while improved, for recent years still remain below pre-recession levels, a for-sale housing market that's operating on less than one month's supply, with an average home price exceeding $300,000. It's basically doubled in about seven years, a rental market that is characterized by extremely low vacancy rates, a long-term pattern of strong rent growth, and large rent premiums for newer apartment properties. You're experiencing changing migration patterns from higher-cost markets that are putting pressure on existing housing supply, and you have persistently tough affordability conditions, especially for renters. About 55% of renters in the city are estimated to be cost-burdened, meaning they're spending 30% or more of their income on housing. While land prices haven't increased to the levels that would encourage tear-down activity, many older neighborhoods in the city are experiencing an increase in remodeling and reinvestment. This seems to be concentrated in areas such as Aberdeen, the historic Northside, or Country Club neighborhoods, Mesa Junction, and other central high school neighborhoods. The interviews we completed with brokers and builders suggest that the northern areas of the city are expected to experience greater change from new development in the future, and this expectation is principally attributed to demand from households that are working in Colorado Springs, Fort Carson, elsewhere in the I-25 corridor north of Pueblo. As you have land and development costs that increase in tandem with the price of existing homes, one of the behavioral responses will be a shift to smaller housing units that are more affordable by the size. This will present an increasing market opportunity for smaller lot, single-family homes, as well as attached housing products. There's also perceived to be a shortage of newer, higher-quality apartment units that are available to attract workers recruited to Pueblo for employment, such as related to the healthcare fields. On this slide, we've got a figure or chart summarizing what we refer to as a housing gap analysis. It's highlighting your existing housing needs today rather than the future, say, five or 10 years out. But the gist is that a large deficit of deeply affordable units currently exists among the lowest-priced tier. About 9,000 households throughout Pueblo County are estimated to afford no more than $375 a month in monthly rent or costs, while the supply of units at that price or below is only about 5,200 units. So the difference suggests a gap of units affordable to the lowest-income households of about 3,800 units. And most of this gap is associated with rental units that are located in the City of Pueblo, as opposed to elsewhere in the county. This jives with interviews pointing to a chronic need for assisted or subsidized units to house the very low-income unemployed or underemployed population. There's also an increasing amount of transitional or support housing needed to house people afflicted with drug or alcohol addiction or struggle with mental health challenges. At the opposite of this income or rent spectrum, there's estimated to be about 23,000 households in Pueblo County that could afford housing that exceeds $1,875 a month in cost. This exceeds the supply units at that upper-price bracket by about 8,000 units. So this doesn't necessarily mean there's a deficiency in the housing stock. Instead, it's suggesting that the housing inventory at the upper end of the price ladder is still comparatively affordable, and it's also highlighting the potential demand among existing households for new or higher-priced housing products. Another element of the housing assessment was to consider the financial feasibility of developing new single-family or multifamily units in Pueblo. And one reference point for measuring that feasibility is what we call a residual land value of a development. In a nutshell, this is indicating what a builder or developer could pay for land, basically given three things: the market rate price of a new home or unit, the cost to develop or produce that unit, and then a feasible rate of return or profit margin, if you will, on the development. So we think there are three types of housing essentially that are likely to be financially feasible for the private market to produce. These include sort of a typical detached, single-family home, or we've called a city lot, but six or 7,000 square feet, a more dense attached townhome or duplex type of home, and then multifamily units that we think of as walk-up units, meaning not many, if any, common hallways, no elevators, and so forth. So they're more economical to produce. With land values estimated at approximately $2 to $4 a square foot for these three housing types, the inference we make is that a developer or builder could acquire land, produce the units, and earn a feasible return on that investment. The analysis also indicates that new single-family units can't be produced at prices that'll be affordable to less than 110% of area median income, and for townhomes or more dense duplex-style units that afford to be affordability threshold, it's probably closer to 95% of area median income. Building off of that analysis, there's also a couple of housing types that are going to be more challenging for the private market to produce on their own. So for example, private unassisted development of a low-rise apartment building, meaning four or five stories, and adaptive reuse of existing commercial buildings, aren't estimated to be feasible. The land values for these are negative, or in other words, there's a feasibility gap that needs to be bridged for these types of housing projects. The return on investment would likely be too low to attract the capital needed to build, so public funding or other incentives will be needed to encourage these types of multifamily development, or conversely, market rents are going to need to increase even further before they become feasible. Moving on to the topic of looking forward at your future housing needs to accommodate growth, there's three sources basically that influence housing need in the future. Number one being employment growth, number two being lifecycle events or lifestyle changes among the existing population, and the third factor would be housing replacement. We prepared a projection of each of these three sources that over 10 years in Pueblo County suggests a total need of just under 10,000 units. Workforce housing is the largest source of future housing need at about 4,300 units. And by workforce housing, we mean additional housing that'll be needed to accommodate a household with at least one person who's active in the labor force. The senior housing need is estimated somewhat less at about 3,600 units over 10 years, and this accounts for growth in households over time that are not active in the labor force and include at least one person who's 65 years of age or older. The last source of housing need, replacement need, is estimated about 1,600 units over 10 years. So irrespective of any of these other housing needs, there's always some continual need to replace housing, whether it be lost to fire or natural disaster and so forth. But more commonly, it's just housing that's simply removed from the existing inventory, either because of physical obsolescence or changing market conditions, such as a landlord who might merge two units into one and sell it as a owner-occupied housing unit. About 75% of the future workforce and senior housing need over 10 years is expected or projected to be for some type of single-family housing, and the remaining 25% or roughly 2,000 units is associated with multifamily units. Not all of the workforce and senior households potentially attracted to Pueblo in the future will be able to afford the costs of a new construction market-rate housing unit. Some of the future demand or need, especially that which is associated with households below 80% of area median income, will need to be satisfied through existing lower-priced housing stock. Given the limited availability of existing housing at this point in time, new housing development that can induce or accommodate higher income, existing residents moving into new units would be both desirable and necessary to accommodate the future growth potential. And this relates to the next finding I'm going to walk you through. Existing households that already live in Pueblo County will generate housing demands as they trade up or down in housing size, price, quality, and so forth. Based on the housing survey that we completed and the responses that we obtained through that, we estimate that roughly 70% of existing households in the county, which equates to about 4,800 households, would expect to move each year. Some of these households will migrate out and leave the region, although the majority or about 60% indicated plans to remain in Pueblo. This suggests about 2,700 households will thus turn over, if you will, or move in a given year and stay within the local housing market. About 3/4 and 1/2 of renters, we think, could be potential candidates for new construction housing. This equates to potential annual demand from existing households of up to 1,600 units per year for new market-rate housing. So although these moves among existing households don't necessarily contribute to an incremental increase in the number of housing units you need, satisfying the preferences or demands from existing households to trade up or down in their housing selection will be instrumental in improving mobility in the housing market. When an insufficient number of new housing units are available at the top end of the market, some higher-income households will substitute two units in, quote, "the lower rungs of the housing market" or "the housing price ladder." This ultimately contributes to higher prices for housing than may have otherwise been affordable to more moderate or middle-income households, and these middle-income households in turn then bid up the prices at the next cost tier or quality tier down, and so on and so forth. Thus, our first recommendation is to encourage the production of new market-rate housing units, and ideally, you would facilitate the overproduction of market-rate housing units. Although the units created and might be sold at, quote, "market rates" or rented at market rates, their production helps to promote affordability by satisfying the demand of higher-income households, which would otherwise compete for and bid up the price of existing housing units. A second point of emphasis should focus on a regulatory and planning environment that improves the ease and timeliness of housing production. This means removing the uncertainties about things like stormwater facility requirements, reducing procedural complexity in issuing land entitlements or permits and the time required to do that. And it also means ensuring that municipal and utility fees don't add disproportionately to the cost of producing a new housing unit. In addition, pursue state grants that are affordable to incentivize affordable housing developments, and be proactive in expanding and planning for future public infrastructure needs. Given the critical relationship between housing and economic development that we touched on previously, we would also consider dedicating some local funds to support new housing development. As one example, the 1/2 cent special sales tax for economic development. Dedicated local funds could support new housing in a variety of ways, encouraging both production and diversity of housing, such as assisting with the costs of public infrastructure, or something like buying income-based deed restrictions for projects or locations where it might make sense to do so. Consider formally incorporating development incentives for affordable or workforce housing into existing codes. Examples would include zoning or building variances, density bonuses, fee waivers, or financial incentives like rebates of construction sales tax. Downtown Pueblo is also a unique historic asset, and any programs or policies that help to improve the feasibility of reusing upper floors of historic buildings or commercial buildings for housing certainly does make sense. So the city should consider all options on the table to alleviate extraordinary costs with converting these upper floors, and it would also help to establish a formal implementation plan related to downtown housing. For example, private investment in these buildings would become more likely and less risky from the standpoint of the private sector if things like parking issues or financial or non-financial incentives were more clearly established. Also encourage the more intensive use of underutilized properties that already have infrastructure. The costs of extending your roadways and utilities and so forth can add up pretty quickly. So to the extent practical, identify or earmark, if you will, surplus publicly on properties or land for future workforce housing development, and also assist private property owners with similar sites to sort of package, plan, and dispose of these properties for future housing development. Speaking with the theme of creating new housing inside of the existing infrastructure footprint, we would also consider how existing zoning and development codes could be clarified or amended to specifically address accessory dwelling units. That would include identifying locations or lot sizes or existing zone districts where ADUs might be permissible or even encouraged, and then making decisions about other requirements, such as whether off-street parking will be required from ADU. To address owner-occupied housing needs that won't be met by the private market, make more extensive use of shared equity models that have already been implemented in Pueblo. For example, the High Park Garden subdivision was initially on land donated by the city, and then the land improvements or the horizontal costs, if you will, were put into a land trust as a shared equity component. So essentially, the affordability of owner-occupied housing is created and preserved by a communal ground lease, where the land cost is removed from the price of the home, if you will. This last slide is summarizing some of our final recommendations that include modifying building codes or improving flexibility where it can be done safely in relation to the renovation of older properties and/or using loan programs and things like property tax abatements to, again, help encourage the maintenance and preservation of older, more affordable housing units. Lastly, for the reasons I described and outlined in the report, we recommend not following the lead of California cities that have become the poster child of, or children, I guess, of the affordable housing crisis. So in other words, do not adopt inclusionary zoning requirements. That's my attempt at a 15-minute rundown of our report, so myself, Aaron, and Deborah available to dive into any details or answer questions if we can today.
Thank you, Brian. Do you have anything else?
I did rush through the introduction a little bit. I should have propped them up on a higher pedestal, because I really do appreciate all their efforts. But in the effort to allow you guys ample time to ask questions, I kind of hit and run. So please start with your questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counselor Schilling?
Thank you for your time and effort. Two questions. One, I thought I caught in there, you estimating our growth in government-assisted housing to be growing, correct?
We're saying there's probably a need for housing. Whether it's growing or not, I don't know. I think that's a function of
Okay.
the resources you have available, but there'd be a need for it.
There'd be a need for it, okay. You used the term "market rate" twice. For renters and housing, give me a dollar amount for market rate. What do you mean by that? Dollar amount, simple dollar amount?
Well, the analysis we did, I think, assumed about $1.75 a square foot was the market rent. So 1,000-square-foot unit would be $1,700 a month would be market rent.
Yet we got half the population that can't Yet we got half the population that can't afford that, so we've got a problem. And I don't know if anybody's getting that much for rent in town, but thank you.
This two-hundred-page report has quite a few statistics in it. We might have used a dollar twenty a square foot, and it's in a table somewhere in here. But I do
But seventy-five cents, I'm not going to debate that. I'm just
Well, the market rate per bedroom seems, you know, there's these tiers. So there's not just, market rate doesn't hit at twelve hundred, you know, based on the size, but
That's an estimate of if you're building what you basically need to build new construction apartments in Pueblo for a private developer, not what an existing unit that's fifty years old. So there is a large gap between existing rents and quote market rents you would need to develop new, which is part of the challenge here, that it's not obviously feasible for the private market to deliver two thousand new rental units, essentially.
More questions, comments? Nobody? This is a, as Brian knows, this is a big-time report that we've been waiting on for quite a while. And quite frankly, I read the report and it's telling us everything that we thought we knew. But now we can see it on paper, which is, was redeeming in some way. I mean, we knew we had the problem. We knew that we need to do things to enhance what's going on. And, you know, now we have something that shows us that what we're doing and a lot of the things that we have in place makes sense. And we need to keep that up. I did read something in the report that was very interesting, where one of the recommendations was is that, you know, the city needs to look at infrastructure requirements within these developments, where you're talking about sewer and water and things like that. And that it makes sense to make that type of investment into these developments if we want to grow and if we want to create housing. And this is really an opportune time, I think, with the ARPA money. We, you know, we've been talking about this and talking about this. If you got thirty-seven million dollars and you can feed some of that money into infrastructure that will spur on development, the economic windfall from that is just tremendous. And I mean, I think we should be looking at it as a city and as a city council. Yeah, this is, this is good stuff. Good stuff. Counselor Schilling?
I think your whole report really emphasizes we got to get involved, the city does. And I think we need to, we're going to have to bend the way over backwards and be news-makingly friendly to construction, to getting this done. We're going to have to get rid of permit fees. We're going to have to give some land away. We're going to have to take some damn write-up a contract where you get paid in time or something. But I think this whole thing screams cities need to be real flexible like they've never had to be before in order to accomplish some of these goals. And your report to me just screams that, and I hope everybody else heard that. We need to get flexible, maybe like we've never been before, and not foolish flexible, but productively flexible. Thanks.
Counselor Flores?
You've mentioned several things, several incentives, I guess, that communities are doing. And I think one of them points to one of our developments now, which is leaving the cost of the land out of the cost of the mortgage for the homeowner. Do you, can you tell us what, or can you prioritize those things that other communities are doing that we are not doing right now that could really help us do some of the things that Bob was talking about? Because I think there's just a lot of creative stuff going on all over the place. If you were in our shoes, how would you prioritize those things that we should be doing that we're not doing right now?
My take is it's kind of a, these are each piece of the puzzle. It's not one or the other, or that community land trusts are the way to go as opposed to tax increment financing. I think you need to consider all of them. And, you know, for example, the shared equity program that we referred to, that's really more targeted to affordable, income-restricted housing, whereas some of the incentives were referring to fee waivers and TIF and property tax abatements. A lot of communities will be, we use those to incentivize projects that are market rate projects, but they're, you know, they're in a location or neighborhood that are desirable for one reason or the other. I mean, I think, I guess to answer your question is, I don't know that there's one that has more priority over the other. So maybe a matter of what the city feels more comfortable or thinks they can do better.
I don't know if you can hear me. This is Arian Green, and I'll just pipe in just to prove on here. One of my biases is to emphasize the things within your control. Things like entitlement or development processing are generally in your control. And so you can, you know, reduce uncertainty, increasing predictability, I think, is a big one. And it generally doesn't cost cap, you know, capital as much as reorganizing your procedures. And then I do think infrastructure, being innovative and flexible, and now to get the right amount of infrastructure and in advance of development needs is the next big one. So those would be my two big ones.
Thank you. Any other, Counselor Brown?
Is a lot of this directed at first-time home buyers? Your Is your offering?
It certainly could be. I mean, a large segment of the market today in Pueblo is first-time home buyers. First-time homes and last homes are the two.
Yeah. So is there any kind of education in there? Because if somebody's been written before, they don't know all the ins and outs of owning a home, responsibilities, I guess.
Sure. I don't think we specifically recommended the city institute financial literacy, if you will, but that's, I would imagine, part of the solution. And some of your local groups, I think, do that as well, you know, neighbor works and so forth.
Anybody else? Thank you. We appreciate what you did.
Thank you.
Number three on the agenda, which is marijuana drive-up window and delivery. Mr. Gloss?
Evening, Mr. Chairperson, City Council, Mr. Merritt. So I have a PowerPoint as well. But I'm just here tonight to brief you on the newest with regards to retail and medical marijuana delivery, walk-up and drive-up windows. Just to brief you on the state of the law and just see if the city council is interested in passing an ordinance on those. Oh, I do. So the basics, marijuana delivery, walk-ups, and drive-ups were allowed as of January 2nd, 2021. Medical actually became legal back in January 2nd, 2020. Marijuana delivery, walk-ups, and drive-ups are all currently prohibited within the city. It's an opt-in at the state level, so you have, we have to actually have an ordinance allowing these things before they are legal within the city. Until such time, they are still prohibited. The city also has certain ordinances and regulations on the books that prohibit things like walk-ups and drive-ups. If marijuana delivery is approved, in particular, the city will have the option to prohibit deliveries from outside of the jurisdiction, such as from the county or if someone wanted to deliver from Colorado Springs, that could be prohibited. With regard to delivery permits, they are allowed for both medical and retail stores. Also available for transport licenses, which the city does not have, but it's a type of license for businesses that transport product in between other marijuana businesses and potentially deliver. Medical or retail stores can acquire a special delivery permit. So they would have to get both a local permit and a state permit. They can't just get one or the other. Something the state does or that is in statute is that if delivery is allowed either for medical or retail, a one-dollar surcharge is charged for every delivery, and that goes towards marijuana enforcement. And also something is electronic orders. Generally, marijuana businesses cannot take electronic orders, but if they get delivery permit, they are allowed to do so for deliveries. These are the general requirements for marijuana permits, delivery permits. The permits are valid for one year and may be renewed annually. The transporters, whether they're stores or a transporter licenseee, cannot take individual deliveries while transporting between businesses. They can only pick up and drop off. When delivering to individuals, the individuals must, of course, be at least twenty-one years of age, have acceptable ID, and receive the delivery pursuant to all local and state rules. The delivery driver must inspect the identification and compare it to what was on the order. They cannot deliver to someone else. It has to be that person and all the information has to match. And the delivery driver and the licensed business must have certain required state training that's above and beyond what they normally have to do. Deliveries are limited to the daily amounts established by state law, which is two ounces for medical and one ounce for retail. So you can't have someone making multiple orders and going past the daily limit. It's only, again, for the specific individual at the provided address. So say they're delivering to a house and there's five people there. They can only deliver to a specific person. They can't deliver to anyone at that location. They can make no more than one delivery per day to the same individual or the same location, even if they didn't get up to that maximum limit. And they can only deliver to private residences. So they can't deliver to public spots such as restaurants, and they can't deliver to somewhere that you'd be concerned about, schools. There are also certain additional requirements for the vehicles that do the delivery. So all the more detailed regulations, such as obtaining that responsible vendor certification, which is that above and beyond. All inventory is tracked by the state in accordance with their metric system. And every delivery must have a transport manifest detailing what's going on. Some additional motor vehicles requirements is that they are registered and insured, which is just state law anyways. But they also have to have a vehicle traffics, traffic, sorry, tracking system that shows where the vehicle is at all times. However, this tracking system cannot then be used to update customers on where their order is. It's just to see where everything is, and it's not for, it's not customer-related. The vehicle cannot have external markings, so can't have the name of the business on the side or any advertisement. It's just a blank vehicle. The marijuana must not be visible from outside the vehicle, so everything has to be covered and away from view at all times. And then there are additional security requirements, such as an alarm system, a security lockbox, video surveillance, and other things like that. There are certain differences depending upon the type of vehicle. So if they, if it's in a closed vehicle and they're complying with all these regulations, they can have up to ten thousand dollars worth of product in the vehicle. If it is not an enclosed vehicle, such as an open car or truck, they're limited to two thousand dollars worth. So in those cases, they would still have the lockbox and everything would be secured, but they're just lowering the risk. Before anything is placed in delivery vehicle, they must actually receive an order. They can't just leave things in the vehicle and then make deliveries as they go. They have to get an order, put it in the vehicle, and then make that delivery. These are not mobile dispensaries. Everything is by order, one at a time. And you can't just flag them down as they're going down the streets and buy your marijuana. If they cannot complete delivery, the marijuana is just returned to the store. Although orders are accepted at any time, deliveries may only be made between the hours of eight AM and midnight. And the state fee is four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars initially, and then half that for renewals. So these are just some things that the city can do if it decides it would like to allow delivery. It can basically impose stricter regulations, like it can always do with marijuana, just not looser ones. So we could require that security personnel accompany all deliveries that they check, when they check ID, they deal with electronic scanners. Further define private residences where they can deliver and perhaps create buffers. Further restrict delivery hours. Say if we don't, if we want them to finish up an hour or two before midnight, we can do that. Say that only enclosed motor vehicles may deliver so that we don't have to worry about open vehicles. Perhaps limiting thefts and such. We can prohibit deliveries from outside the city again. And then if we want to say one vehicle per business and see how it works out, we could do something like that as well. Jurisdiction. So this is what other jurisdictions are doing with regards to delivery. It is still not widely adopted. It's, even though it's been out for most of a year, medical even longer, it's just hasn't been much pushed for. So Denver, delivery is limited to transporter licensees for the next three years. And if a medical or retail store wants to allow delivery, they have to contract with one of these transporter licenses, and then they make deliveries on their behalf. The license fee is two thousand dollars and then five hundred dollars for the application fee. And they have certain social equity discounts to kind of encourage folks that aren't these big businesses to get involved because transporters and delivery is seen as kind of a less strenuous, less difficult part of the field. So they're hoping to bring in additional people, more of the mom-and-pop type, who can get involved at lower prices. Boulder, in particular, has delivery limited to medical marijuana stores. It's just considered part of the license there. They don't have additional fee. They don't need an additional permit. They could just, those stores can deliver. Superior marijuana establishments are prohibited within the city itself, but for some reason, they allow delivery from outside the jurisdiction inside the jurisdiction, and they did that via ordinances. Longmont is like Boulder, and only medical marijuana stores might deliver. There's no separate fee. It's just part of the license. Aurora and their marijuana model is closest to ours. They allow delivery for retail marijuana stores and licensed transporters. If a transporter is getting licensed, they have to meet social equity requirements, kind of like Denver, such as the business or the person trying to get that license is a longtime Colorado resident. They have a relative convicted marijuana-related offense, or they are a low-income household. So it's kind of trying to stimulate jobs. They also limit their delivery hours from eight AM to ten PM, charge two thousand eight hundred dollars for a permit, although there's a discount for social equity where it's only three hundred and twenty-five. And then they have additional requirements for motor vehicles and inspections. So moving on from delivery is walk-up and drive-up windows. These technically became legal as of January 2021, although the state loosened its restrictions on walk-ups in particular during the COVID-19 pandemic, just so people could make their purchases without fear of infection. At the state level and the local level, this would require modification of premises, so everything would have to go through a board approval if they want to get a walk-up or drive-up window. So the area outside the window must be owned by business. It cannot be a public area. So they cannot have their walk-up or drive-up window abutting a public sidewalk. It'd have to be a closed-off part of the premises, or not necessarily closed off, but part of the premises. There are the same requirements with regards to viewing and inspecting customer ID and other security concerns, although there's also additional security cameras and such at the window itself. Orders placed at a window must be close through a menu, such as if you're just going to a regular fast food restaurant, there's a menu there. However, per our regulations, it would just be limited to the name of the product and the price. They couldn't have different paraphernalia. They couldn't have different paraphernalia pictured or things like that. And also there's a prohibition on vehicles entering the licensed premises. So for example, they could not open up a garage and say it was their drive-through. It's kind of like a, kind of like you could see a service station for a car dealer doing. And these are, if the city wanted to impose additional regulations on walk-up and drive-up windows, again, you can limit the hours of use or require additional security, but there's less to do with, less to do with these ones. And these would of course need prior approval from various city departments, including planning and regional building and all those. Walk-ups and drive-ups like delivery, it hasn't, not many jurisdictions have dealt with it. Denver allows walk-up and drive-ups, drive-ups subject to various city department approvals. Dillon allows them, also subject to various approvals and parachute, but those are the only jurisdictions I found that technically allowed them. Perhaps other jurisdictions just, oh, it's just included as part of the license, but there weren't any specific regulations on allowing or disallowing. And that was it. A brief presentation for you. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counsel winner?
So I don't know if it's really necessary to have laws that are stricter than the Colorado law, but the only thing that I would say is that I really don't like the optics of a walk-up. So I would, I would not want that. Maybe a drive-through, but no walk-ups. And no, no stricter ordinances.
Counsel Schelling?
Well, we already have these things for liquor, right? We got drive-ups for liquor?
I believe so.
Okay, so we wouldn't be doing anything different than we already did. And then I just have a question or two. On the prohibition from deliveries from out of town, as long as we're collecting the sales tax, where do we, why do we care where it comes from? And I'm not looking for a long answer. That's just a question you can mull over. And then I guess it's coming, folks. And some of these other communities audience did it remember. First of all, some of us up here come from a generation where we had friends that went to jail for a year for having to lit a pot. So things have come a long ways. Pardon me. Yeah, that's an old-time term for you, Lori.
I know.
Some of you older people don't understand what that word means. So it's, it's, it's coming. Just it started as legalized in medical marijuana, now it's coming. And I'd hate to put a lot of restrictions on, I'm more interested in collecting the license fee, and people are going to buy it whether they can drive-through or walk in a store. I think it, you know, if anybody's driven down Elizabeth, Sonic has a drive-through. You're stuck on Elizabeth trying to get through that drive-through. To me, I'm not trying to legislate the morals, because that's already been decided upon. I just would like to see as much possible sales tax revenue as we can possibly get, and to make it as easy for possible, for people to drive-through. Lori, I don't necessarily agree with you on the walk-up, but I don't really care about that. I just, well, it would increase, but I don't, I think most people are lazy. So they're not going to get out of the car. I think they're going to drive-through. And so I, I don't care whether, if I get sales tax revenue from O'Hana, because he brought somebody an ounce of pot to Pueblo, I don't care. Maybe somebody else does. As long as I'm getting that sales tax revenue and we got those fees, I have a hard time arguing against it. Now, somebody's got a moral obligation, a moral problem with it, I'm not going there. State already says what we can do and not do. So I'm for it. On witness, thank you.
Counsel Flores, just to clarify and be precise about this. If we do nothing, then it can't be done here in the city of Pueblo. The law opens the door. That doesn't mean we have to walk through it, right?
Correct. We would have to pass an ordinance to allow one, all, or any combination of these three.
Okay. I guess my next question is, you know, where do we go from here? I guess you obviously were just given the task of explaining all of this, what we can and cannot do.
So if counsel would like, I could prepare an ordinance for one or all, and perhaps pair a ordinance instituting delivery, and then one instituting walk-ups and drive-ups, and the city council can decide on those once it comes before.
Okay, so that's a task for us to decide what the next step is, is what you're saying?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Attencio?
Yeah, other cities aren't breaking down the door to put up drive-throughs and walkthroughs, right?
Uh, no, not according to my research. There hasn't been a ton of movement on it.
Yeah, I'd say we just leave it as is. We don't have to. I mean, I like being a, bleeding in all sorts of things, especially renewable energy, but walk-up and drive-through marijuana joints. I say we just leave it, and maybe someday if the rest of the state breaks down the door and wants them, and they absolutely have to have them, and the citizens come to us and say, hey, we need it, absolutely, then do it, but not now. Just leave it alone.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah, just because, just because you can do it doesn't make, make it a good deal. Yeah, I, I say leave it to, let's give them direction. I say leave it like you, like it is. Lori doesn't care. Solange. She's good with just leaving it the way it is, Ed? Leaving it the way it is? Yes, sir.
Oh, am I on? I thought it was on. The question is, we have eight licenses in the city, within the city. Have, has anybody gotten any kind of clamoring from them that they want it, they need it? Or that they, they won't survive if we, we don't give that to them?
Not to that extent.
Anybody talk to me about this issue at all?
They, they have expressed interest, although not clamoring for it. They are interested. The, the one we've heard most about is the hospitality establishments. But I, I believe counsel took a position on that before COVID, and COVID just made it more complicated. But with regards to delivery and walk-ups and drive-throughs, they're definitely interested, but it's, it's not their priority, I don't think.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We'll go on to number four, which is a budget work session. Mayor Gradisar, Ms. Lano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. We really don't have a presentation to make this evening. We're just interested in having a conversation with counsel, your ideas, thoughts about what's been presented to you, and what if anything you'd like to see different, and just have a conversation.
Great. Want to start? Counsel Winner?
Well, I, I guess I could start. So I'm wondering, I guess, first of all, I'm wondering why we are putting imaginary numbers in the 2022 budget, such as the $5 million for roads that really isn't going to come till the end of 2022. If, if, if it does come.
What?
Is anybody else following me here? Okay, so do you understand what I'm saying?
No.
Okay, so this 2022 budget, you have got the $500,000 in that budget for the two, as if 2A had passed.
Well, we've got a 22 budget is $10 million for roads. $10 million we're going to spend for roads in 2022.
You have an additional $5 million.
Five million.
If 2A passes.
Correct.
But if 2A passes, that's really not going to come till the end of '22, so that would be like a 2023 budget.
No. No, the 2A will allow us to keep the money that we're collecting this year, which we expect to be $11 million.
That's at the end of 2021?
2021, yes.
Okay.
Say again?
We're projecting, we're projecting that we're going to end the year with $11 million over what we budgeted. As Ms. Solano explained, it's on B1. If you look at B1 in the budget.
I think Daryl's going to pull it up from last week's.
Okay.
The previous one.
There is right there. 2020, 2021 estimated actual. You see down there? Pardon me?
B1.
B1.
It's your summary page.
And the fifth item, the fifth amount from the bottom in column 2021, this shows the $11,657,860.
So that's what we'll plan on spending in 2022. That's where the $5 million for roads.
Okay, it's my understanding that the ballot initiative says there's 575,000 dollars?
From 2020, yes.
From 2020?
Yes. Yes.
Not 2021?
Not, we won't know what 2021's number is until next July. This July, we found out that in 2020, we collected $576,709 over what we were legally allowed to keep from Tabor. So that's the problem with Tabor. It's sort of a six months after the end of the year where you collect and spent the money. Problem.
Out of that 11 million, oh, what'd you do with that? It's like, out of that 11 million, the previous finance director has estimated, out of that 11 million that Daryl's showing you, that the refund of, of that could go out to the taxpayers without 2A passing is about $6.5 million. So it's more than half of that 11 million. Well, this budget is based on the fact that we won't refund to the taxpayers, that instead we will utilize it
Right.
in the 2022 budget, but we already collected it this year. But this 11 million is here. It was a very good year.
Okay, but you figured in the $6 million as if we are going to pass 2A.
We figured in as if we were going to keep it and then spend it.
Right, so those are imaginary numbers in the 2022 budget until we know if 2A has passed or not.
They are budgeted numbers in the 2022 budget, but they are actual with respect to current through the end of June, and then estimated revenue through the end of the year in revenue from the, from the sales tax revenue estimate through, through September. So those are, those aren't imaginary. They are in the bank, except for the last quarter of the year. But what, what they are used to for is budgeted in 2022. We, we would have collected them in 2021.
Right, but you don't know if you have to, to refund that $6 million or not.
Correct.
You've added it in here, so it's an imaginary number. It's, it's, I guess I shouldn't say imaginary. That's if it passes. So we've, we've got a whole budget here that's overestimated by $6 million.
As, as I said in my letter.
I, I just want you to, to explain. I'm not, I'm not trying to noodle anyone. These are just questions.
As I explained in the letter, this budget is contingent on 2A passing.
Right.
Right.
So I don't know how I can pass a budget if I don't know it's going to pass or not.
Well, you won't pass a budget. We'll know tomorrow whether 2A passes.
Okay.
And if 2A doesn't pass, you'll have a revised budget.
Okay. If 2A doesn't pass, the, the options are to leave that budget like it looks and dip into the reserves, which is the numbers further, further down, that keeps going away there, that slide. Or revise a budget and remove some of the expenditures as has planned.
So that's, that's a conversation we'll have to have.
That will have to be.
Whether you want to leave it like it is and just take the money out of the reserves, or whether you want to cut that six and a half million that we'll have to refund.
Summarize all of it.
Okay, so the raises, is that including the $6 million? All of the raises throughout, all the, I mean, all the raises?
Well, all the raises are included in the budget.
Is it contingent about the $6 million?
Well, some of the raises are, I guess all the raises are contractual at this point. So we have to pay those, those raises, because we have contracts with the employees. We've agreed to do that.
Okay.
So if we want to save money on personnel, we do that by eliminating jobs, not by reducing what we've agreed to pay the people that are working for us. That's how we reduce personnel costs, not by reducing the amount we've agreed to pay them or the amount we've agreed to increase their pay, but by eliminating positions, which you've heard me say doesn't make much sense when we have this growth going on and we need more people to interact with the public and interact with developers so that we can move this process along, so.
Seven new jobs. I guess, I guess I just had some questions, because on some of these wages, it looked like a 18% increase. Well, you can look at any random department if you want, and all you have to do is look at the, how much the wages have increased from 2021 to proposed 2022. And they're, they're ranging from like 15.88% to 21%. So I just had some questions about that.
Total wages? You mean, you're talking about the total for personnel in that department?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I haven't done that calculation or looked at that, but I think.
That's a pretty big raise.
Well, it's a pretty big raise. Some of that increase, I think, is attributable to new employees coming on, so that's included in that number. But we also made a concerted and conscientious effort to grant to our directors some merit raises, if you will, plus cost of living raises to try to get them to the point where they're competitive in the market. So some, that's where some of that's attributable to.
The $6 million? Some of that's attributed to that, or what? You're talking about the the increase in, the percentage of the increase in wages?
I'm talking about the increase in wages, yeah.
No, no one individual received an 18% raise.
I'm looking at the total number.
Oh, yeah.
From, I'm looking at total from say 21, 2021 to 2022, administrative wages and, and general service wages. I mean, if you take, if you look at 2021 to 22, it's like a 15.8 to 21% increase.
What page, Yonlor?
Um, well, right now I just kind of flipped open to Public Works. You've got two.
At the bottom, there should be eight.
Sorry, D64. What is that noise?
I think it's Anna. Anna's probably opening her budget book.
Oh, oh, I see.
So in Public Works.
There's two new employees.
There's three new employees on page D68. There's a traffic engineer. Those there. Oh, that's just in transportation. I apologize. I'll go back to just Public Works.
Oh, oh, yeah. Sorry, I was looking at, I was like, yeah, I mean, it's what, 78 total employees, correct? Under Public Works? Yes. So it is three, so three new employees.
Yeah, we estimated in 2021, we'll have spent total wages of 3.5 million, and we're budgeting for 2022, 4.3 million.
Well, if you look at the top two, your 4.3 million, that's including some overtime and sell-out payout pay, step-up uniforms. So I'm just, I'm just going by administrative wages and general service wages. Just those two. I didn't even figure in temporary part-time wages.
Yeah, administrative wages is up between the difference of 765,638. That's, that's a. That's, that's probably the salary and the benefits of one individual. And then the general service wages are the other new hires, between three point three million and two point seven. And, and, and Anna's, oh, she's there, so I bet Anna could jump in at any time.
So, um, we had one, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so part of this difference is we had one planner that was budgeted in planning for twenty twenty-one that has moved over to Public Works for twenty twenty-two. So that's part of your jump in general service. And then there's actually four new positions, one of them that wasn't budgeted in twenty twenty-one, but it was added mid-year. And then three new positions that you see in this budget book. So that's the big change in Public Works, you have a total of actually five new people that were different between the twenty twenty-one budget and the twenty twenty-two budget.
And as I said, this is a department that is critical to the timely review of development projects and prospects.
You know, I have a question on that. In two thousand seven, two thousand five to two thousand eight, when the city was doing twice the number of houses and in developments, they had the same number of employees. Okay, so what would you attribute that to? That they could do double the amount of work with the same amount of employees?
Well, I think it maybe is the nature of the work, and I don't, I have to go back and look to see whether those are new subdivisions coming in, which is what's happened here, obviously, things have gotten a lot more complicated since two thousand and eight in terms of stormwater rules, regulations, requirements for developers, they'll tell you that. So I think that's part of it, that it's, it's, it's gotten more complicated than it was back then. And as I say, I don't know, a lot of the work being done now is with respect to the new subdivisions, the subdivision agreements that for areas that are getting annexed into the city. And frankly, Counselor Alef, I can't tell you whether that was the case in two thousand eight or not.
Yeah, I can't either.
Yeah.
But I imagine there were subdivisions in two thousand five, two thousand six, and we were doing, we were doing, you know, five hundred to six hundred homes a year. Now we're doing a hundred and fifty and they're, and they're telling us they need more employees. It, it just, I mean, on the surface, if you just look at the numbers, it doesn't make sense. But maybe if we got a good explanation on that, it would, it would make sense. Because you're going from a budget of, in two thousand nineteen, they made, you, you had a two point eight million dollar budget in just Public Works and Administration and General Services, and now you're up to a four million dollar budget. And they're doing the same amount of work, I mean, it's not, it has not gotten.
No, I don't, just because they're building fewer houses than they did in two thousand eight, I don't think that means they're doing less work. It's, I think, you know, we, we could research that and see whether or not they were there were annexations taking place at, at that time that required this, this work or not, but yeah, I think once, I'm not sure Public Works has a lot to do with the houses.
Can I just say something?
Developments, they do.
Chair, Councilor Shaw.
You know, part of it too may be that some of these departments were terribly understaffed. We already have a few departments that need people, and maybe they did all that work, but they were terribly understaffed. I don't, when two thousand eight hit, I think everything was starting to fall apart. I'm glad I wasn't on council then, because I think they really had to do some major budget cuts going, while that was going on, so. I don't know if you can blame it on workload or just understaffed, maybe if we sent five hundred cars, don't get mad at me, but if we pulled five hundred cars into you for the garage to work on and you were trying to maintain it with the staff you got, I mean, you were gonna do that, you can do that, or a contractor, whoever. But maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm, my guess is that was part of it. Okay, give me another analogy, it's short staff, however you wanna to put it out. I think planning's been short, housing is short, I mean, we're, everybody got cut.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's not needed.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sitting here saying that, I'm just asking the question. You did five hundred, we, we were much busier then than we are, we seem to be now when it comes to developments. And we did it with the same amount of people.
Well, Counselor Alef, it is the kind of question that, that actually we could look into.
Sure.
We could compare salaries, we compare vacancies, we could compare equipment, we could compare a number of streets, you know, fixed or not. But it's gonna take a little bit of time to do that.
Sure.
But we absolutely have the resources and the, the dollar values to go back and compare just personnel and what their assignments were and how many vacancies there were and all that combined. And but we can't, we can put forth the effort to look into that, given the right year. If you'd like a comparison to two thousand seven and eight, or a comparison to fifteen and sixteen, it just, you know, it just depends on what you like to see as the comparative years.
Counselor Flores.
Yeah, I'm trying to think about why there's such a difference here in this question. And I live in a development that was started probably in two thousand and eight, right at the beginning of the recession. And it isn't until this year that it has completely been full, there, there's no more lots to be had. And so on the surface, during this period that the development was already completed, I can imagine you could, you could, you could get a permit, a building permit, and then you're dealing with breach no building. There's very, I don't think there's as much work there as now that we've hit a wall and don't have all these empty lots. You're talking about development, planning, zoning, all of those things that are very, very time-consuming, and I'm thinking that that might be the answer. That is that we don't have the inventory of buildable lots like we had back, you know, just ten years ago, and so, I mean, that, that could be partial, the partial answer anyway.
That was the point I was, I think, inarticulately trying to make, is that once, once you have the development set up and it's all plotted and that kind of stuff, not much is required from the city in that regard. But trying to get property annexed in and to get those subdivisions set up so that the lots are there, the stormwater requirements are there, is an enormously a time-consuming process, and what I hear in my office is the delays, you know, why is it taking so long to do this? And the reason is, we don't have enough people to review it. Now, why are we not able to, you know, keep these stormwater areas free of trash, debris, weeds? We don't have enough people to do it, we don't have enough equipment to do it, that's part of the reason why you're seeing some increases here.
The, the other thing that I don't wanna leave hanging out there, and that is that if, if I use an example, that we have a department that has a million dollar gross wages, and we add two people, and we're adding another hundred and fifty thousand in wages for anyone to believe that those people now have gotten a fifty percent raise. We, we just added two more people.
Yeah.
That was my.
That's why the percentage is so much high. Most of our agreements with our, our, you know, our, our labor agreements, just in my short time that I've been on city council, has been between two and a half and three and a half percent, kind of in that range, that doesn't change. But I can see a much larger percentage change when you're adding employees.
Sure.
No, 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 because I, I mean, you can even take out, say, for three employees, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of those out of one of those two figures from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, and you're still gonna be at like sixteen percent.
The place to be looking is that, is on our bargaining unit agreements, we have contractual obligations where we've given, we've all voted on these here, so.
Yeah.
So what was the obligation, what percentage was the obligation?
Two point seven five percent for police and two point seven five to three point two five for some firemen.
Right, that's why I thought it was around two to three percent.
And we gave two point five percent, I believe, to the general service workers, you'll recall, we did that specially, we didn't need to do that at all. They were gonna get a point eight eight increase, and we decided that wasn't fair, all things considered, and we should give them the the two point five as well, so those are the percentage increases. Now, as I say, there've been some job reclassifications, there've been some supervisors that have got merit increases, and we've tried to move up. But that, that accounts for portions of that increase you see there.
Nine, three. That's a big increase, I mean, this is a huge increase.
Yeah, and also, that's why the analysis is important, because although the twenty twenty-one estimates are what they are, I, I can't account for who was vacant, the engineering manager position was vacant for a majority of the year. So the page number sixty-six.
Well, I, I counted those as well, on sixty-six, you've got.
Sixty-six accounts for the twenty.
I just figure it sixty thousand dollars per employee at three employees, if you take a hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of these numbers, you're still at around sixteen percent on your wages.
Yeah, and some of them are gonna be, the fourth person is the one transferred from planning. See, each individual department would have its own scenario. And, and some of the twenty twenty-one approved positions would have been vacant through the year. So that although it's accounted for on sixty-six, it's not accounted for in what we would have spent in twenty twenty-one. So we have to lay down twenty twenty-one's estimated budget, instead of this is an estimated actual. And I don't have, I didn't bring the twenty twenty budget with me. Anna might have it with her.
I, I have the twenty twenty-one, and general service in twenty twenty-one, the adopted amount was two point seven um, for general service, but I, we keep saying sixty-six thousand times three people, but there were actually five positions. So four new positions, and then that planner that went from planning to public works. And sixty-six thousand would be more around a utility worker salary, where we're adding like an associate engineer, which is closer to seventy-five thousand, so I estimate that the additional four people is closer to around three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And I don't have that principal planner that went from planning to public works right in front of me, so I don't, I can't add that. So it's not a hundred and eighty, it's closer to three hundred for the new position.
Can bring back the exact numbers.
Yeah, we can do that, if that's.
If that's one department.
You want us to look at Public Works and come back at the next work session, and we'll tell you exactly why those numbers went where they did.
Well, it doesn't have to be Public Works, this shows up in all, in every department.
If, we can, whatever, whatever department you like to analyze, or we can take the ones that it's the highest cost, we can reconcile it to the exact amount of the increase and its source.
Okay. Okay, and then I had another question here about the roads on F thirty-two. So, um, the three point six from the fee, the roads fee.
Right.
Um, that's what we collected in twenty twenty-one.
Well, that's what we, not necessarily what we collected, we collect about two point eight. So there's probably some leftover that's incorporated into this three point six.
What?
The big, big.
Repair utility.
Okay, so that, there's twenty twenty-one.
No, that's just utilities, repair utility. You say you got two point nine?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, this is the fee, isn't it, the repair utility, isn't that the fee that we're collecting off the water bill?
Three, three million six hundred fifty thousand.
Is that what people are paying through the water bill?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's correct.
We're, we're gonna use that amount in this budget.
Yeah, but you said, you just said two point nine.
That's what we collect in a year, so there's three point six, and Anna, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think this
Right.
We've got in that account, correct?
Yeah, so what we, what we have budgeted is we are projecting two point eight that we're gonna collect, and an additional nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand that is gonna come from the fund balance. So that's amounts that we, we've collected in twenty twenty-one or prior years that we have to use in additional in twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And then we have to subtract the seventy-eight thousand we paid to the Board of Waterworks for the billing services, and that's where the three point six five zero comes from.
Okay.
It's the far right column on page F thirty-three.
On, correct.
Okay, so again, the five million, we don't know if that's gonna be there or not. So you're definitely gonna, in twenty twenty-two, you, you'll definitely spend the utility fee and that, well, all, is that all of the highway user, will you put all of that in there?
All highway user, no, part of it we use for salaries in the streets.
Right, right.
Right, because they maintain streets.
Okay, but then in twenty twenty-three, if two A passes, then we lose the utility.
Pardon me?
If two A passes, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take off the utility fees?
We haven't, we can't.
Yeah.
We have it on there, we have it on, we kept it because, in case two A did not pass.
Well.
That's why we kept it.
This is, that water fee is the little engine that could because Wood Basin, Tabor, and then the rest of the collections in future years on excess revenue, that's the only guarantee we have, if everything falls apart, we can change it if you want. But it's the only guarantee that we have of at least three million bucks or so. Worst-case scenario, the economy's gone to hell, gone to heck, and we've got a real problem. At least we've got that constant fee coming in. Everything else is betting on the, on the.
All right, I just, I just thought we had talked something differently about that, so.
When we were talking about a half cent sales tax, that was gonna be all specifically devoted to street repairs.
Right, right, and, and so is two A.
Away from that.
Two A reads that way as well. Okay, um, all right, I guess that's, I guess that's all I have.
Where?
For now, I guess, the next time we meet though.
Five million coming from?
What's that?
Where's the five million coming?
That's, that's if two A passes.
That's the general fund budget. But that's money we're gonna take from the general fund and put into street repairs next year, if two A passes.
General fund.
Yes.
Fund balance.
No, that's that eleven million dollars that we predict we're gonna have left over this year. We're gonna use five million of it to repair the streets next year.
Say again?
On the B one, where we've got that, we expect, we'll, we'll end up this year eleven million dollars to the good.
Yeah.
We're gonna take five million dollars of that and put it into the general fund for the street repairs. So when you add them.
So it's coming, so you're doing point nine from the fund balance to make thirty-six, and you're using another five million from the fund balance to do the ten one?
Point nine, no, the, the nine hundred thousand is in the street repair utility fund.
No, somebody just said it came from fund balance.
It, it's from the street utility fund, street repair funds. So in, in governmental accounting, there's all the different funds. The street utility fund has a fund balance that you carried forward into twenty twenty-two.
And that's not the general fund, that's the street repair utility fund, that's where that nine hundred thousand is coming from to make the three point six.
Okay, from the utility, okay.
Yes.
Now, where, where was the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar excess? I thought it was six hundred and fifty thousand dollar excess from twenty-one. Five, five, whatever, now it's six million?
No, they're two different years, and, and Anna, maybe you can, you can tell us, where in twenty twenty, twenty twenties, the five hundred and some thousand dollars was accounted for when we closed this last year?
Twenty twenty?
That's the.
I don't understand, it's twenty twenty, that's really throwing me.
It was, I'll let Anna.
In twenty twenty-one, in our property taxes, which is on B one, under them general taxes, in twenty twenty, we collected seventy-seven million in general taxes. But a portion of that was for property taxes, and we collected five hundred, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number right in front of me, but five hundred and some change more than Tabor will allow us to keep. So that money is down in where it says increase or decrease in fund balance, that five hundred thousand is in our fund balance. So if we have to refund that, if two A doesn't pass, we'll refund it through a temporary credit on our mail levy, and it will reduce the property taxes we'll take in during twenty twenty-two.
Okay, now.
So all of the property taxpayers will get a refund.
Okay.
Not the sales taxpayers.
Okay, now the sales taxpayer, how does Tabor figure fit in there?
They go to the next year, now you go to twenty twenty-one, and Anna, where is the six point? They go to the next year. Now you go to twenty twenty one. And Anna, where is the six point five million in twenty twenty one?
It's in, it's in that eleven, eleven million, six hundred and fifty, seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty.
It's way in the top line now, it's in.
That's, that's not in two A though.
It's, it's, Anna, it's in the top, it's in the eighty eight million, one hundred ninety three.
Yeah.
That we're collecting.
Yeah.
It's in the, well, it, it's in all of our revenues. So Tabor makes us look at all of our revenues. And we're going over in our total revenues, not just our property taxes in twenty twenty one. Based on these estimates. The year hasn't ended. We won't know how the year will end until next July, but based on this estimate. In all of our revenues, we're gonna go over not just in property taxes.
So in the top row of revenue there, the second column from the right, in eighty eight million and then down to the one oh three. When the calculation happens in Tabor excess, the revenue generated for that year is included in a variety of those revenue sources. So we don't see six point five million, just we can circle and look at in one place.
Yeah, understood. But how, how much in twenty twenty one will we be able to keep under Tabor?
The difference between the eleven, a million, six hundred and fifty thousand minus six point five million.
And six five point five is just an estimate.
It's just the estimate. And we really won't know until we close the twenty twenty one year, which happens in June of twenty twenty two. It is all about what comes first, the chicken or the egg.
Uh, that takes me to my question last time we talked. How are you gonna spend the money you don't have? If you don't close it out till June of next year, how are you gonna spend the money? It, uh, you're putting it in the twenty twenty two budget to spend it. What, how could you do that?
On the premise.
You don't know what you've got.
On the premise of two A passing and not having to refund it.
That's my point exactly.
Right, right. So it's only budgeted here, it's not expended.
Yes, not spent. This is what we plan for next year.
Again, you're projecting that you're gonna be six million dollars over, so you're gonna spend that.
We're gonna plan to spend it.
Well.
The budget, the budget is balanced without using any reserves. So we're not, the budget was balanced with showing no reserve use at all. So we're not tapping into that eleven million at all, based on this ballot, this budget that the mayor has, um, presented to you. So we're not tapping into that eleven million at all. So we're not touching the six million.
Well, yeah, you are, because you said you're gonna put five million into, uh, the street repair. You're spending.
And it's part. It's part of this budget. If you look down under transfers out to other funds um, on your far right column, it says fifteen million, three twenty four, eight twenty eight. That fifteen million dollars includes the five million that will go to the capital improvement fund for roads.
And that comes from the eleven million.
Right.
It co, it comes from the total revenue that we're expecting to project up on top.
It, it's part of the, it's part of the plan to, um, transfers out for the year out of this general fund revenue.
Oh, I never get my, my answer. I just.
The answer to Larry's question seems to be, do we spend the money before we get it? Is that your question?
You can't spend it before you have it. The, the reality is, is that after tomorrow, we will know whether two A passed or not. We meet again the following Monday. The following Monday, we will know that one way or the other, either two A passed or two A didn't pass. So if it didn't pass, then we have to make decisions on what you're gonna do, what we're gonna do with the budget. Because we know that we will probably have to pay back six and a half million dollars to the taxpayers.
In twenty two.
Yes.
Yep, next year.
Yes. And we're for sure gonna have to pay five hundred and sixty thousand this year.
Yes.
If two A doesn't pass, but if two A passes, then our arguments or questions are based upon the numbers that we see here. So, you know, that was my argument from the very beginning. I said, it's very hard, it's very hard to sit here and, and have a a spirited discussion about a budget that we don't even know is, is, is going to happen until next Monday. Uh, when we get together on, on budget. And, and just to touch on what Lori said one more time. You know, every year, we seem to have this same, uh, conversation about personnel expense, because personnel expense always goes up. But what we never see, and, and what's always very, uh, not deceiving, because I don't wanna say it's deceiving, but yet it's we fund these positions, but we don't necessarily fill the positions. And you never know until the very end of a year whether any of that that actual money is, is, uh, is spent or not. So if you go back and you look historically over the budgets, you'll always see a budgeted amount and an actual amount. And when you look at personnel historically, you will always see a big difference between what was budgeted and what was actually spent on, on personnel expense.
Difference is about five percent.
Yeah.
Five percent. Now that's.
You know, I've always said.
More or little, I don't know.
I started with the city manager and I always accused him of that being his slush fund. But it wasn't a slush fund, but it's, it's a budgeting fund. The, the, and we never know exactly how much money we have and how much we got going out. It's just, it's just a mess. Go ahead.
Yeah, and, and a lot of the line items are like that too. You know, some of them are doubled. I, I mean, just really bizarre things that pop out at you. It just seems like it would be more logical to have each department have a have, have, um, a contingency. Rather than showing something as doubling or tripling, a line item is doubling or tripling. It seems like, instead of spreading that out along line items, you would just have a contingency for each department. Do you know, do you know what I'm talking about? That's kinda what, kinda what you were saying too, in a way.
Yeah, they do have.
We have a contingency for personnel, it's X amount. And, you know, when a, a job comes up and we're applying for it, it comes out of the contingency fund from that department. That way you're not, like, you, you know, there's some of these line items that, you know, have gone up substantially.
Give us some s, specific examples of what you're talking about. We can go track them down.
Well, you know.
That's what we need to have, so.
Right, just, you know, big budgets that, that I was used to, you, you know, a long time ago. The departments had a contingency fund. You didn't spread, you didn't hide money basically among line items. I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Well, that's just another line item to hide money, and if you ask me.
You, you know, the, the, the financial statements are.
That's not what I was.
Yeah, but the statements are audited annually, and, uh, the requirements for, for, um, general accepting accounting standards for governments are, are, um, are followed, as you see an annual audit. Um, how, how departments manage within those departments is, um, they, they would tell us, we don't, they don't have a contingency at all. Where they are planning to the line item as we create a line item budget. But they would have an annually, um, request, any increase like you see at any one of those amounts. They would have to have submitted the request to increase with specifics on how they were going to spend it uh, for the mayor's review and approval by line item by department. Stacks of papers called a Form A. And then there's an audit trail and it's tracked.
Okay. Seems like it would, it, it would let us see how much money we have total, I guess. But if you say that, say if postage is going up three times, should the, uh, department have approached you and say, hey, we're going from six thousand to thirty thousand? They would have to approach you and say, this is how much postage we're gonna have?
And they did. And purchasing needed a, the postage meter, um, it went kaput about a month ago. And they didn't have enough budget in their, in their, in their twenty twenty one budget to cover a ten thousand, eight hundred dollar new postage meter. So there's a separate process and request for the mayor's review and approval. And where does that money come from? And it has to either come from council contingency, mayor contingency, or the general fund. And Anna would be right involved in saying, here's where the resources come from. Um, so that happens throughout the year depending on department.
Okay.
But yes, they would have to. Next year we.
Yeah, that's what I was saying earlier, that it would be so much better i, and i, if we had a finance committee, say, two people from council that was on a finance committee, so that we were looking at these things more than just in a big glob like this. But that was refused by the mayor. You didn't want us to have a finance committee.
No, you can have a finance committee.
That was, wasn't what you said when we asked you.
Well.
And what, what I've been asking the mayor for is a budget analyst, that somebody can come in in every quarter, present to him and to city council a quarterly update of those kinds of, of changes to the budget. So somebody that comes to work every day and lives plans for this budget.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. No, let me make it clear, that if the council wants to set up a finance committee among itself and wants to review this in line item detail, we will bring whoever you want in to come in and do that. All you have to do is say, this is what we'd like to do.
So it would just be better to see it at, I, I don't know, I guess, um, quarterly or e, even monthly would be good, to so, so we know what's happening with the budget monthly.
The department directors do see a budget to actual for their each individual department.
Every month. I would like to see that.
Okay.
Wouldn't anybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be very helpful.
Okay, we'll, uh, see what we can do to get that out to you.
Lori, do you have anything else you wanna go over? I think quite literally next Monday will be the time when we can make big decisions. Uh, Counselor Flores?
I just wanted to confirm, uh, with you, Laura, that, uh, we're required by federal law to follow GASB, the government accounting.
Standards.
Standards. And so I think for the record, is the city of Pueblo falling, following GASB rules?
Not only do you follow them, but, but just this past year, you, you actually presented an award to the finance department for the forty third year of quality financial work from a governmental entity.
Thank you.
Right, I, I would like to make a point that questions are not needling people. Or, you know, I, it just seems like a lot of times when you're asking questions, it comes back like we're trying to say something or not. They're just questions. And, and, and it would be nice to ask questions and not have attitude. You know, I get questions to me every day and, and I don't act like it's an insult. It's just a question. So it's only an insult if you don't like to answer it.
Well, and it's truly, and it's truly, uh, city council's responsibility to pass the budget. This is our budget. This is, uh, uh, you know, if the community doesn't like the way that the city's spending money, the, the only people they can turn to and say, you screwed this up is city council, because city council literally approves the budget. Uh, you, we truly do not have to accept anything in this budget. We could go back and say, we want you to do this, we want you to do that, we want.
We can't do that if we don't have the right information from the administration.
Exactly.
Yet is just numbers here, numbers there, and all kinds of numbers all over the place. Uh, we're not getting the right information. How can we make a decision?
Well, that's our fault, because we asked, we asked early last year to be a part of the budget process.
And they said no.
Mayor told us no, and we accepted that. And by accepting that, then, then we just became complacent in the process. And now we're sitting here in November saying, jeez, we wish we had the information. We should have demanded the information starting back in February or March or whatever it was. Uh, we were shut down. We were told we can't be a part of it, uh, that the directors don't want us involved in it. And, uh, this is what you get. So the directors should not be surprised if you think that a hundred and eight million dollars in expenses is too much. That's all I'm saying. It's, it's our responsibility, not the mayor's responsibility to make this budget happen. He presents it, we approve it, or we make changes to what we think are acceptable. That's, that's the way it's set up. That's why our government works. Any questions? Anybody need anything else?